Wisdom to lead this town in a way to, we will all be proud to say that we are citizens here in Biloxi, giving them the strength, the power to do all the things that we need to be done in a systematic and well-mounded way, these and all other blessings. We ask in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. If we could have Felix Guine lead us in the pledge.
Let's lead this into the light, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Organize here for a minute. Chair, entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Clerk would read the revisions.
To the policy agenda, we're removing item 4C until October 18th, resolution for preliminary subdivision plan for Southern Magnolia Place subdivision. To the consent agenda, we're removing 5A, resolution for distribution of funds, substituting 5W, resolution authorizing payment for eminent domain, adding item 5EE, resolution amending the budget for Shriners Boulevard water sewer extension, adding 5FF, resolution ratifying the filing for federal transportation alternative project, adding 5GG, resolution approving installation of playground equipment for Eagle Point, adding 5HH, resolution approving installation of playground equipment for Pinzel Park.
Move the agenda as amended.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Lawrence to move the agenda as amended, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion there being none? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everyone to our Oktoberfest here, Oktober meeting, and they welcome everyone for cruising. I think we're looking at a great week and it's off to a good week, I think, Kenny, as what you've already indicated. I do, we'd like to ask at this point in time, one, Frank Bordeaux to come give us an update on the insurance information.
Be brief.
With the insurance committee and the administration, we were able to replace Berkeley. That was the carrier I brought in the first meeting to you all with Ambridge, which provided better coverage. The main notable difference from last year to this year beyond premium is the law enforcement liability. Self-insured retention has gone from 150,000 to 250,000, which is obviously a negative. Everything else in the program remains the same. We have a nine percent increase and a lot of that is in surplus lines tax. Your carrier last year was an admitted carrier. This year it's a non-admitted carrier. That's not uncommon for a city the size of Biloxi.
Any questions?
Not really that bad. Only a $51,000 increase. Did quite well, I think.
And our class are doing very well on both the comp side and the liability side. That's your biggest expense, much bigger than this expense. And so it's, we're moving in a very good direction.
All right. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it. And I do ask you to move to spread the expenses of a Biloxi travel credit card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I do. I'm sorry.
Oh, wait.
Almost forgot about y'all. Hundred years. I can't forget about a hundred years, right? So it's a great pleasure to award this or present this proclamation. La Masque was founded in Biloxi on October 22nd, 1922, making it the oldest women's Mardi Gras crew on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, whereas this month La Masque celebrates their 100th anniversary. And the purpose of La Masque was to promote social activity and to hold a mask ball by its members once a year, whereas La Masque has held an annual Mardi Gras ball every year since 1922, except for the years 1942, 45 during World War II, 1970 following Hurricane Camille, and 2006 following Hurricane Katrina, and 2021 because of COVID-19. Now therefore, I Andrew Fofo-Gillisch, Mayor of Biloxi, in honor of celebrating Mardi Gras in Biloxi for 100 years, do hereby proclaim the 22nd day of October 2022 as La Masque Day. There you go.
A hundred years, anything.
Thank you all. Would you like to say a few words about the crew? A little plug about the crew?
Well, yeah. I'm Terry Green. I'm the captain of La Masque this year. Thank you, Mayor Gillich. Thank you, City Council members, for recognizing us with this proclamation. We, I've lost my train of thought. We were founded in October 1922 here in Biloxi, and so we're celebrating our 100th anniversary. We know how important Mardi Gras is to Biloxi, and we're proud to be the oldest women's organization on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. And on behalf of all the past, present, and future members of La Masque, I happily accept this proclamation.
Who's the king and queen this year?
That's a secret. Secret. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, a couple of things. I've been asking about the plaque for the World War I veterans. Do we have somebody that does that for us to make the plaques?
We, there are some things to engrave plaques. I know, I'm aware of a couple of companies that can do that. And we investigated the repair of it, but we can, we can reach out to them again to see if we can, there's been some cracking and so forth that needs to be attended to.
I will look at that because the palm trees, you know, we're having a problem keeping them alive. So we put a plaque with the palms on it with the names. We just save a lot of trouble to people to World War I, veterans of that, people that passed away in World War I. And I know we got a lot going on this week. It hasn't been great. But you know, what the thing that bothers me, how come we don't have Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday downtown Biloxi, downtown something, more events? I mean, they all stay in the city of Biloxi. How come we can't expand it to two or three days?
Well, yeah, I think along the coast, I think each day is sort of dedicated. But I mean, that's not to say we can't do something our own. I know Margaritaville hit a very successful day today, probably the best ever. And we see them all around. Saw a number of 55s and 56s, more than I've ever seen.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's just a little bit, piece of useless information that you might need. But yeah, no, that's nothing to say we can't do it. You want to take charge of it?
No problem.
Okay.
You gotta have somebody promote it. We'll take care of that part. We'll be dancing Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I just wanted to check with that.
Good deal. Thank you. Mr. Guines?
Yes, just want to say thank you to the city. I went and represented the city of Biloxi on behalf of MML. The hot ticket item was the ARPA funds, how to spend it. And of course, Biloxi is pretty good and we're on top of our stuff. So that was just the hot ticket item. And I just represented Biloxi very well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Newman?
Ms. Newman.
Mr. Demming?
Mike, good to see you here. I spoke with Mr. Mayor about the pending changes in engineering. So I'm going to hold off on any of my requests, comments, or remarks until we get that squared away. One thing I did want to suggest or mention to the administration, do you remember last year, I think it was at Cruisin' the Coast when the gentleman was shot, that there was that gun, that shootout, and there was one of, there was a visitor that was hit, struck with a bullet? I think a nurse on the scene was just enjoying the festivities as anyone else is, and rose to the occasion and saved his life. They actually met today again on an anniversary, and I think it might be nice to do something for Monique Petrowski and the gentleman that was shot. I don't recall his name off the top of my head, but I do have his name at home, and I will, I will get it to you if, if you are inclined to do so.
Yeah, we might do something tomorrow. And they may have good chances they'll be here, you know, around the house. If you give me the contact information, I'll, we'll recognize it.
I will. I will. Thank you. And I also want to wish happy birthday to El Capitan Tisdale over here. Happy birthday, sir.
I'm aging before your very eyes at this very moment.
That's all I have.
All right, birthday boy. Mr. Tisdale?
First of all, I'd like to thank Robert and Robert only for wishing me a happy birthday. Thank you so much, Robert. Mr. Mayor, I know we have an appointment coming up on the tree committee. Are we moving forward on that? I know we had spoken about it for a couple of months.
I think we'll have all those appointments squared for the second meeting.
All right. My birthday wish.
There you go.
And I know we have some appointments due on the planning commission as well. I was driving through Hiller Park. Do we have any plans for the tennis courts that are there? I know there.
We've been getting some estimates on reconditioning those things.
Okay, outstanding. And my guess would be the pickleball people may, I'm just saying.
Well, I think we've discussed that with them, and you know, their, their growth at the existing spot is what they would prefer. But I mean, they can get, just like Circle, I think the Circle Park had, you know, reached right, so they could play both.
Be nice. The only other thing is I know on the city's website, when we adopt the budget shortly thereafter, usually they have several budget documents posted, but that's varied over the years. We usually have, we almost always have the combined fund statement, the summary of departmental budgets, and some years we've had a statement of revenues, other years we've had a list of capital projects. I think one or two years we had the non-departmental expenditures or whatever. I mean, personally, I think it'd be great to put all five of them online when they're prepared. I don't know when they will be prepared, but I'm just saying it'd be nice to be consistent. And those are typically what we've done in the past, just not all five at the same time, but they all give a different perspective of the budget and what we adopted.
Yeah, it's not a problem doing that. But the, I think we did publish the revenues and expense as well as the combined statements. We had a whole page in the newspaper. I'm not sure whether they had a detailed revenue and a detailed
Right.
non-departmental expenses.
Right. And the only
We'll look at it. We don't mind.
Okay, the only, the only other thing is I just want to wait for just a moment in case you have something for my birthday, Mr. Mayor.
I do, but it's in another room right now.
Okay, all right.
Let me give you a dollar.
Thank you. Nothing more I enjoy on my birthday than putting you on the spot. Thank you so much. That concludes my questions and report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. We'll move on to District 5 Councilman Nathan Barrett.
Just October 22nd, we'll be having a trunk or treat at Eagle Point Park. And also, I think Sherry had mentioned something about a ribbon cutting sometime soon on that. I think that we're pretty much done. But before we do that, if we could get that ditch hit one more time, I think it'd be the last time this year, but if we could get something on the books for that. And then the only other thing is with this extended dry spell that we have, it'd be, I know it's sort of difficult for the contractual services or whatever. We're having trouble hiring some of those guys or getting them to work or whatever now as well. But some of these easements and stuff that are dried out now, that is hard to get equipment in there during other times of the year. If we could get some of these easements cleaned through contractual services while everything's really dry right now, that'd be great as well. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. From my report, like to echo Cruisin' the Coast. I mean, what, what a great Chamber of Commerce type of weather we have for this event. Today we, there was a cruise in over at Margaritaville, and I'm telling you, probably had 2,000 more cars than we did the year before, just because of the expanded parking that has been done this year versus last year. Cars were parked all the way up on First Street, Pine Street, wrapped around Oak Street, and that was good, great to see. Also, kudos to Public Works and Crag Ross for responding to a request to assess a drainage issue in Destiny Plantation. The owners of a couple of houses in that area are grateful that the team came out, spoke to them, analyzed the situation, looked at it objectively, and had come up with a solution that they're happy with. So thank you for that. I have a town hall meeting coming up on Wednesday, the 12th. It'll be at the Blake Retirement Home from 5:30 to 7:30. Prior to the actual meeting, my wife is going to do a pusherata demonstration for the residents. And we also are going to have somebody come out and do a voter registration for some of the residents who have specifically requested that. And then we'll have a good time with the administration and the directors. And Patana and Machado is going to come out and just do a presentation on their findings about A.J. Holloway Sports Plex and our commitment to the upgrades there with the understanding, we may not be able to do all of it, but we're going to try to prioritize and do as much as we can out there. And then last, I would ask my colleagues if we could close this meeting in memorandum of Gerald Sunshine Creel. That's the father of Vincent Creel. And if we can just do that for his family. And that concludes my report. We'll move on to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Raise your hand to be recognized. You'll have up to three minutes to talk about any subject you want to talk about. And, but when you hear the bell, your time will be expired at that, at that time. So if you raise your hand, yes, ma'am. Yep, you're recognized.
Good evening, councilpeople. In regards to item 4C
Excuse me, one more thing. I forgot to mention, I need you to sign in legibly on the sheet that's at the front, and if you would state your name and address clearly for the clerk to record.
Of course.
Go ahead and proceed.
My name is Kirsten Hanson. I live at 12096 Shorecrest Road. This is in regard to item 4C that was, is going to be postponed. My neighbors and I feel that it is unfair that it was removed from today's agenda without appropriate notification, and a lot of community members cannot make it during the day due to employment. And we'd like you to consider reading their public comments into the record when this item returns to the agenda or tabling it until the next 6:00 PM meeting. Typically, my husband David will be here, but he is experiencing some health issues. But he's come before you many times in protest of the development to be put in on Shorecrest Road. But the outrage for the development goes far beyond me or my husband, and I have provided to you the latest copy of the petition with 271 signatures on it. The majority of these signatures represent our neighbors that will be directly impacted by this development. If you look at the map at the top of your packet, you read the comments of those that signed the petition envision not just of those, those of us in this room, but also the voices of those that signed the petition. We have concerns regarding flooding, roads that cannot handle this increase in traffic, schools that are at capacity already, environmental issues, and infrastructure that is insufficient to support this proposed development. Our ditches, our roads, our community cannot handle 52 new homes at this time. You can see from the provided map that our whole community is concerned. This is not isolated to a small number of voices. This is the vast majority of those that live in the surrounding area. Please use your best judgment and your vote when the matter comes back to the agenda. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Terry Bennett. My address is 9436 Boyett Road, Biloxi, out there in Wool Market. I'm here also about the subdivision on Shorecrest. I agree with Ms. Kirsten. Our roads and ditches cannot handle it. I've been trying for over two years to get ditches cleaned up. My house floods every time it rains, and more houses is just going to cause more problems. I mean, I've done everything I can in my power to clean my ditches up. I put in, spent lots of my money putting in drainages out to the ditches, but it ain't doing any good because the ditches aren't clean, they're not deep enough, they can't handle the water. I agree. I also would like you to take into consideration when the vote comes to not let the subdivision go through. I just, me personally, I cannot, my house cannot handle it. So, thank you.
Just give me one second before we start the clock. I'd like to give Mr. Barrett just a second or two to make a statement.
The, the person who has this on the agenda couldn't be here today, so they asked that it be moved to next week. But I talked to Kenny, and if the rest of the council's fine, I know that a lot of people can't make those meetings at the 1:30 time, so I have no problem moving that to the first meeting of November, so that people in the community can come and voice their concerns during that meeting, as long as the rest of the council's okay with it.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. We'd ask the administration to give that consideration. Okay, go ahead and proceed.
My name is Martha Vergunst. I live at 9407 Boyett Road in Biloxi. I am also opposed to the subdivision. I am, I, my house fronts or has a west side of an entire drainage ditch that floods, and I have had to spend thousands of our own money to create drainage as well. But it's still, the city needs to clean the, the spots next to the road, because there's popcorn trees growing up that's even preventing the water from getting in the ditch that I've spent hundreds and thousands of dollars to clean out. So, anyway, that I'm also opposed to the subdivision for the drainage reasons and everything else that Kirsten mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Bob Wall at 2592 Andover Court. I'm here about the resolution to deny the conditional use for the car wash on Pass Road. And as a resident and business taxpayer, I'm definitely opposed to this car wash. On September 15th, the planning commission voted to recommend a denial of the conditional use for the car wash and not being compatible with the character of the surrounding lands and uses was the reason. Andrew's Apartments is very close. Ed Noakes Apartments have many very close apartments, some as close as 20 yards. Bedroom windows and front doors just a few yards away from where the car wash would be. The average sound level of a freight train is 85 dB, and the average car wash dryer system is 86.6 dB. The vacuum systems for the car washes are near the same volume. At these two apartment complexes, most tenants would hear dryers and vacuums from seven or eight in the morning to six or seven o'clock at night, seven days a week. And hopefully you'll find this sufficient to deny the conditional use. Also, 27 protected trees would be taken out. This proposed location, excuse me, would be the fourth conveyorized express wash location in West Biloxi, with several more to the west and several to the north. And the one, there's not a need for another express wash, obviously, in such crazy oversaturation. But more importantly, to address the city's interest, the three washes other than Classy Chassis have the ability to not pay any sales tax at all. The new Classy Chassis location would be doing a car washing and express washing and detailing, and would pay in excess of $84,000 a year in sales tax. Since Tom Wall and Arlene Wall opened the Classy Chassis Car Wash on Pass Road in 1986, that location's paid nearly $2 million in sales tax, just in Biloxi alone. Meanwhile, self-serve car washes and express car washes paid zero. Most people don't realize that. Car washes pay sales tax, but they can be exempt. I'd like to give you more detail on car washes not paying sales tax and operating illegally, but I need more than my three minutes. I'd be glad to take questions on that if anybody wants to know more. But the planning commission voted to deny, to deny the conditional use, and I hope you'll do the same. You'll be doing the right thing for the neighborhood and the city of Biloxi. And I thank you, and my mother, Arlene Wall, thanks you. And again, I'll be here for questions if you'd like to know more about any of this.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rob Hunt. I live at 139 Taya Drive. I'm here also for the car wash. I know only have three minutes. I'd also like the council to consider allowing me to speak when it comes back up to item 4D. I think there's a lot to discuss and respond to for Mr. Wall's request. But quickly, Mr. Wall has a great business plan. The, the council, the zoning commission, found that it did not promote public interest. The only public opposition was Mr. Wall. He was a competing business owner. He's got seven or eight locations along the coast. He's got great business from Highway 49, several Pass Road, all the way to Ocean Springs, Pascagoula. And I'm here on behalf of Anderson Construction and Dustin, the owner of the car wash that we are proposing to build, and we're asking to build one. The arborist, as he mentioned, there are trees on the property. The arborist approved the tree removal plan. We mitigated some and moved the facility south on the property to leave many on the north side between the car wash and the apartment complex. One of the main considerations, I think the zoning commission was going to take into account was the conditional use request. And as Mr. Creel pointed out, the zone that car washes are in, it's already correctly zoned, neighborhood business. That lot right now is 1.6 acres, give or, give or take. And it's only, only needs a conditional use. And so that's really all we're asking for is conditional use, not so much the feasibility of another car wash or how many there are. I think obviously if people are expanding that there's not oversaturation. There's plenty of people. If you look at the census for the last 10 years, Harrison County has grown 11 and a half percent. There's 210,000 or so people just here alone. Cruisin' the Coast brings in more each year.
If not, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Move on to the policy agenda. Item A.
Orders to amend section 20-3-24 pertaining to parking along US 90 parking bays and service drives.
Chair, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion was made by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Guines. This is a first reading. Move on to the second readings. Item B. Item B.
Resolution to amend a section of the land development ordinance related to short-term rentals.
This was motion by Mr. Tisdale. This was seconded by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Tisdale, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Creel, if, if, just check me on my understanding of this. This is for new construction of short-term rentals.
Yes, sir.
And it would require, based on, I guess, the number of floors in the structure, how many points of ingress and egress. That's, uh, uh, and that's a safety feature, and I, I think the fire department also would tell you that it's in line with the guidelines. So it doesn't affect existing structures.
That's correct.
This would be new construction. It's just, uh, a safety feature to be sure people can get out of a second floor, uh, short-term rental safely, or use a window based on, I guess, how high that second floor is from ground level. Is that correct?
It would be, it would be new construction, or anyone that comes to the Planning Commission and the council with an existing structure that's asking for conditional use approval for short-term rental, then they would have to add a secondary means of egress.
Thank you.
I had a question, Kenny.
All right, Mr. Barrett has nothing.
I had a question, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
I got here, "Short-term rental to be located within single-family structures." We, we're not supposed to allow that, so how can you write that in this text?
It's not, they're not allowed in single-family structures.
Well, you're sitting there right here, you're passing "short-term rental to be located within single-family structures," right there at the top of the line.
Uh, what it says is, "short-term rentals to be located within single-family structures." That, they're multi-story or elevated. What that's talking about is, like what we've done before, if it's a single-family structure located in RM 20 or RM 30, they'll go through the process, if they want to, they'll go through the process of going to the Planning Commission and then coming to the city council to get approval. But that does not indicate that single-family zoning will allow short-term rental.
Well, you have it written like that here, and it doesn't say anything about new construction. Don't say anything about anything. They're just saying you have to have emergency interests. I have no problem with that part, 'cause we allow them on the beach now, only have one way in and one way out. So what we gonna do about those? You gonna correct those problems that we have already?
No, it would, this would address any new applications that come forward.
I mean, I can, I can't support it, 'cause we saying something we said we weren't gonna do. And you say now, "single, short-term rental to be located within single-family structures." That's kinda contradictory, we say, we, so what we gonna do? So, that's not the way to write it, that's for sure. There's nothing about new or anything else either.
Peter, any conflict with the language?
I, I guess you could add in, instead of "to be located," you could say, "that are located within family structures."
I'll make that amendment.
All right, there's a motion, uh, to amend, uh, the ordinance, uh, to read "located." Peter, what did you say? Located within?
We'll strike the words "to" and "be" and insert "that are."
"That are," okay. We have a motion by Mr. Barrett. Is there a second on his amendment?
I'll make that second.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any additional discussion on the amendment? All right, there being none, uh, we can vote on the amendment, and we can continue discussion on the ordinance as amended. All in favor? Those opposed? All right, 4-2?
Who was for it?
Four, I'm sorry, 5-2. Okay, so the amendment carriers will continue discussion on the, uh, mo, on the item 4B as amended. Mr. Guns, any?
Go ahead. Well, with that, that little thing, but the problem is, you still allow them in single-family structures. And I thought we said we would not do that. And that you write in these laws now, putting these little pieces in one at a time, breaking down single-family residents. Single-family structure, single-family resident. I might just have a problem with that. That's not what we wanted to do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guns, anything?
No comment.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demme?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Should've turned the mic off for that. Uh, Jerry, this, uh, regardless of the language, the "to be" or the "are," this, um, requirement isn't in single-family dwellings that aren't used for short-term, which it perplexes me that we use these codes and say that there's some heightened safety requirement for a buddy of mine that stays in my house versus me staying in my house. Or even somebody I don't know staying in my house. It's still the same life standard that we should apply. And if we're gonna apply this, apply this to short-term rentals, um, we should apply it to all structures. However, um, this would now bar many, if not all, multi-level, single-family dwellings in, in Biloxi without considerable renovation, alteration, or construction being done to them to comply with this. Correct?
That's correct, but you gotta remember that they're changing the use from a residential use to a quasi-commercial use.
Oh, I get that.
You're going to.
It's still a person sleeping in a house versus a person paying to sleep in a house. It's the same thing, the same use of the structure, the same amount of people in the structure. It's the same thing, it's just now, it's kind of end around, um, banning short-term rentals. I mean, that's, this is an attempt to reduce the ability for someone to use their property, whether they're in a single-family structure, multi-family structure, from using it for short-term rentals. And I, I don't understand why this is, why this is really being proposed.
One of the, one of the Planning Commission members, who is a former fireman, brought this up after they had heard a number of cases on, uh, short-term rental. And, you know, in, in considering that a single-family house, like some of the ones that you've looked at there along St. George, you know, that they have maybe one staircase coming down. The code, the building code requires that, even in a single-family structure, that you've got to have a window that has at least five square feet clear in the, the bedroom, so that people have the ability to get out. But once they get out, if they have to drop to the ground from a second-story window, it just adds another life safety concern.
But we don't, we don't add that same life safety concern to someone that owns the house.
Well, the code, you know, we're talking about the code and what the code addresses. And, uh, the, the residential code does not address it. It just addresses the window.
So why would we not address this in our residential code? And to me, it just seems like we're just going after short-term rentals.
I'd like to, if I may, just chime in what I believe might be happening for life safety. It's just like a hotel has different requir, safety, life safety requirements, because this isn't a re, a residence, uh, somebody who owns the home is familiar with the home, with their residence, more, more than a renter or somebody that might be using the premises. And I think it's just an effort to, to add that additional safety, uh, component to it. That's my opinion, so, continue, Mr. Demme.
Look, I, I don't disagree that a renter doesn't know the house the same, but it's a, a, a house. Like, we've all lived in them. We all know what a house is. Typically, the person renting on Airbnb lives in a house or an apartment and is familiar with the constructs of a residence. Again, I just think this is an end around to, to chopping the knees off of short-term rental applications. I hope the rest of the council sees it that way. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I res, I respect the, the councilman's opinion. Uh, just wanna remind everybody that we approved a short-term rental complex that I was not in favor of, and that now must meet commercial construction code requirements.
Yes.
And, uh, the, the, the fact that, um, sticks with me is that this is a commercial enterprise, typically, not always, typically, um, in an RM 20 or RM 30 zone. And, uh, it, it, I, I think because it's a commercial enterprise, a commercial business, that, uh, duty might not be the right word, but, uh, I, I think.
Responsibility.
And it, a good word, an additional responsibility for a customer's safety, I think. So I have no problem with this at all.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
One other thing, Kenny?
Just a moment, Mr. Barrett.
I have no comments.
All right, Mr. Lawrence.
Y'all, y'all, uh, did the other thing we said we wouldn't do. We turned the single-family residents into commercial property. And once you do that, you open a gate to anything you wanna do. And that states right here, "commercial uses, single-family rented structures." And then all of a sudden, now you got single-family homes, a commercial business inside a single-family residence, neighborhoods in that. And that's always something we said we'd stay away from. And yet we started pecking away at that, one little, a little pop at a time. And here's another one, "commercial uses, single-family resident," you know, so.
Mr. Guns?
Not what we wanted.
Yeah, and I just wanted to be clear, this is for everyone that's being built new construction, correct?
New construction, or if somebody has an existing house that's in the right zoning, and they come in and say, "I've decided I want to, uh, use this structure for short-term rental," they would have to go through the process, but they would also have to agree to, uh, add the secondary ingress, egress, yes.
Add the thing to it. Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I reckon y'all are right, new in there somewhere there.
Okay.
That's not in here.
The only vote was written in these resolutions.
Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? 4-3? Was it 4-3 or 5-2?
4-3, yeah.
4-3.
4-3. Do you get the votes?
And Lawrence.
Okay. All right, I'd just like to note again on item 4C, it has been removed. There's a notation until October 18th. There, uh, was a request to move that to November 1st. Uh, if that's unable to be moved to November 1st, if you would just kinda let us know as soon as possible, if that's. Okay, any, any reason we couldn't move it to November 1st? Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, item D.
Resolution to deny conditional use for the construction of a new car wash, known as Rich's Car Wash, located at 2188 Pass Road.
Chair, entertain a motion to deny.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I, I have concern, I, I read the transcript, and two things. Um, one, I'm cognizant of the apartment complex that's adjacent to the north of this. I think on the east side is a Pizza Hut. They close nine or 10 o'clock. Uh, to the west, there's a road that goes back to the apartments. And then I think, uh, a commercial business there. And I, I'm familiar with the noise, so I understand that. Uh, and I don't think there's a compelling need, because I know there's already several car washes in West Biloxi. So, that's my comment. So I agree with the Planning Commission on this. Concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
I didn't second it.
All right, who's second?
Okay, I did. I said, "I think it's not compatible with the neighborhood. It's not something that should be there." So it's a commercial piece of property, so it's not compatible with the neighborhood, with apartments, anything else in that neighborhood. So, I can't support that.
All right, anyone else have a comment on this item? Mr. Guns, anything?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Creel? Just, I'm just curious, um, you know, you know, I come from the Planning Commission side, and just what, what they were thinking when they denied, what were some of the issues that, that came up?
Well, there, there were a couple of things. Uh, I think there was some concern, uh, when Mr. Wall commented that, uh, that these type of operations don't pay taxes. And although, you know, we don't have the means to prove that, he knows more about the industry and could speak to that if you wanna ask him about the way that that works. But I think, uh, Dr. Tisdale was correct. I think part of the concern was that it just wasn't compatible with the neighborhood being right there in front of the retirement community. And that, that is one of the nine conditions that you have to consider. You know, you're supposed to determine that all of the conditions are met for conditional use approval, and that would be item C, and they felt that it didn't meet item C.
Well, they had problems with the character, character of the neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Newman?
I personally don't see an issue with it, being that it's on Pass Road and there's other car washes. I personally, I've had two or three, another one coming up, coffee shop right around the corner for me. Of course, I don't like it, but it, it's America. So there's really nothing I can say about that. I don't see any other issue. I don't see any, uh, residents or the community, um, apartments coming in, in against it, so I, I don't see where there's an issue.
Thank you. Mr. Demme?
Mr. Creel, did we have any opposition at the Planning Commission?
I'm sorry?
Did we have any opposition at the Planning Commission?
But just Mr. Wall.
Just Mr. Wall, just a competitor. And I don't belittle that. I wanna ask you, um, about some of your issues. And I also wanna hear from, uh, the gentleman, I don't, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry. Mr. Hunter, um, regarding the tax system, I wanna understand that, and then also want to understand his position on why the Planning Commission got it wrong. Lastly, is this the location that's between, like, the Pizza Hut and Alpha Care?
It's the one that has all the trees on it, yes.
Right, okay. All right.
Let me just, let me mention one thing. Uh, speaking of the trees, if the council does vote to overturn this denial, then, uh, the applicant would have to go back to the Planning Commission, because when the Planning Commission voted 6 to 4 to deny this application, there was a tree hearing pending after that. But because they voted to deny it, then the tree hearing was not conducted. So, i- if, if y'all go that direction, they would have to go back for their tree hearing before the Planning Commission.
Would they then have to go through the Planning Commission again? And then come back through us again?
Not for the, not for the tree hearing. It, it depends on what the council does with this decision now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wall?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to hear from both of you. Mr. Wall, can you explain, you said if you had a little more time, you could explain to us why there's no taxes being collected by these, these types of operations?
Yeah, uh, uh, everybody I talk to is dumbfounded, and they think that an express wash does pay sales tax, and they, they, they don't. But the, the, the way that Mississippi Tax Code reads is that car washes do pay sales tax, but they can be exempt. And, and the Tax Code, uh, 35459101 states, "In order for a car wash facility to be exempt, the facility's employees cannot provide any assistance in washing, drying, or detailing of the automobile. Manual car washes, detail shops, and those with a mixture of manual and automatic are subject to tax at the regular rate." Excuse me. Classy Chassis does do detailing, so all revenue is taxed, 100% of it. I asked the, personally, I asked the State Tax Commission for clarification, and was told that spraying bug chemical on the windshield and brushing the back of the car requires the facility to pay sales tax on 100% of the revenue coming in. And, uh, and I'd urge all of you to go see an express wash tomorrow and see what's going on. And that's tax evasion. So, i- i- I, I just don't feel it's, uh, in the city's best interest to approve these operations without oversight and clarification on how they'll operate. It's an unfair playing field for us. We pay sales tax, they break the rules, don't pay sales tax, and make more profits. And it goes on all over the Gulf Coast.
Well, Mr. Wall, can I ask you a question? You said if we go see these, see these, um, car washes, if they're spraying bug spray off and washing the back window off, that's tax evasion. That in no way is, per se, proof of tax evasion. Do you have anything that proves that these entities aren't paying taxes? And does Classy Chassis have Classy Chassis Expresses in which there is no component of manual labor?
No. No, we, the, with the operation we have on Highway 49 is identical to what you've approved for us to do on Pass Road in Biloxi. And that'll be express with detailing, we'll pay 100% sales tax on everything. I worked for Rich's Car Wash, not worked, I, I provided. I worked for Rich's Car Wash, not worked, I provided chemical and car wash services through my company, Car Wash of America, at the Riches on Pops Ferry in Biloxi. Owner, Tim Richardson, constantly was telling everybody, stop touching the cars, stop brushing the cars, stop spraying the cars, or we're going to get hit by the tax commission and have to pay back taxes. This was told to me and to Lynn Hammond, his partner, and it goes on all across the Gulf Coast.
Well, when you were.
Needs to be stopped.
Well, when you were reading that, you said they can be exempt, do they have to apply for exemption?
They can, they can, they can touch the cars and pay sales tax.
Well, no, no, no.
Or they can play by the rules, don't spray the car, don't brush the car, and pay sales tax. So they can be exempt.
How do they become exempt, you said they can be?
They become exempt by not touching the car.
So they don't have to apply with any form of government, whether it's state or federal, to receive some tax exemption? They just get to generate revenue and never pay taxes on it?
Oh, and then there's been several car washes in the state that have been hit with, you know, three to five years in back taxes for, you know, one in particular that had an express wash, and with the top wash, they would come out and dry off the car for you. Same thing that's going on at Cajun Car Wash in Pascagoula and Goshay right now. The state tax commission ruled you were to be paying tax on one-hundred percent of it, you know, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars in taxes, so.
Well, thank you.
You're, you're.
Did you have a last, you were going to say something real quick?
No, I, I just.
All right, I appreciate.
It's not the kind of, what does this do for the city to approve an operation that doesn't pay sales tax and pulls from a location that does pay sales tax? In a, in a, the comments about there's plenty of room for car washes, this is the most crazy oversaturation I've ever seen. The rule of thumb for decades has been one car wash every five miles is about enough to take, enough to take care of the area.
I wouldn't know that rule of thumb.
We have thirteen car washes in five miles.
Well, Mr. Wall, I appreciate your comments, I want to move on to Mr. Hunter before I get kicked off the mic.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You've got more than three minutes. You got the floor.
Okay, Mr. Hunter, explain to me why the planning commission got it wrong.
Well, I believe, first of all, I did some studying on the zoning on Biloxi's website. You know, I found the three nearest car washes, all in neighborhood business districts. I mean, it's a commercial district, it's in neighborhood business. Classy Chassis, Hurricane Express, Splash Car Wash, all are within, maybe Ward One, I'm not sure, but I know Ward Three, that's where this one is located. And they were all granted, I guess, the conditional use at some point to open. Now, if you have the report from the zoning commission where it has all of the conversations that went on, Mr. Wall even mentioned that the planning commission just approved a three-and-a-half million dollar one recently that's almost two miles from this location. So I really just disagree with oversaturation. People wouldn't be building and investing millions if they thought that these wouldn't make any money, if there were no cars coming. As Mr. Creel mentioned, we have to go back to get arborist approval again. He is also in the conversation, the minutes here from the planning commission meeting. He did recommend number three, I guess if you had time to look at it, taking them down and mitigating. So we left trees up on the north side, the dryers, I know they are loud, if you've ever been in one or been outside as you clean your vehicle, the vacuums are going to be on the opposite side. It's enclosed in the tunnel, so since it closes at 7:30 with an apartment complex behind it, I don't really see that being an issue with noise at night, with people. I mean, you got Pizza Hut late, that closes later than that, it's, it is zoned already in neighborhood business.
Mr. Hunter.
Yes, sir.
It, I'm sorry for cutting you off, but I think the question that everybody wants to know is, is do you pay taxes?
Well, I don't own a car wash.
Can I answer that, so, me and him are together.
Who are you?
Billy Anderson, I'm with Anderson Construction. So we do not, I mean, we're not here asking for taxes, if he needs to pay taxes, Mississippi people tell him to pay taxes, he's okay with that. It just happens to be the business model he's doing is, they're saying he doesn't pay sales tax, but he pays taxes on other chemicals and things that he purchases through the company. He's also taken his property value from a couple dollars to three-and-a-half million, four million dollars now. He's paying for permit fees, but we are not asking for tax exemption. I mean, that is somebody else who's telling him he's tax exempt. If he is, we don't even know if he is yet.
Well, is he here?
He is here, Mr. Dustin.
Can we ask him if he pays taxes, if his operations pay taxes?
He doesn't own one, and it's not open, and it's not open yet, so he has nothing, I mean, we have not even, nobody.
Has he gotten advice from his accountant? Has his accountant advised him that he won't pay taxes on revenue generated through money earned with no manual labor?
I don't think so.
I think, I would like to know that, that would be, that's a question that I think is probably determining a factor for the way I would vote on this, is if he's participating the same as every other business that operates in Biloxi, including all of ours that operate within the city limits. So I'm going to make a motion to table this. Yeah, I'll see the discussion, and if you allow me to table this until we can get some clarification on the law for exemption, and whether or not our client would be or would not be exempt from paying taxes.
I have the same question, so there's no reason for me to.
All right, I'll just make these comments, you know, when you, first of all, I don't think it's just the competitor's voice here, even though it's been on the record that he was at the planning commission, and he's here today, just as the operator is facing this planning commission recommendation. The planning commission, you know, was not your competitor, but they're certainly an entity that reviews these, and they determined that it was not compatible. They had some logic in what they said why, and one being the noise issue. There are some trees that are protected trees that would be removed. There is, seems to be, car washes that are servicing our community in and around this area. The residential apartment, quiet enjoyment could come into play here. And then the issue about tax exempt, it seems like that's a simple question, and it's yes, I'm paying them, or no, I'm not. Instead of this, we might be paying them, we're not asking for it, but we're, we really don't know. So that has to be weighed in our decision today, or at least my decision, as I look at the preponderance of issues, not just one, we're not just talking about trees, we're not just talking about saturation, we're not just talking about a residential apartment right behind this entity that creates some noise that's equal to a freight train. We're not just talking about the planning's commission's recommendation to deny, and we're not just talking about tax exempt when another entity definitely is paying taxes. So that's compelling to me, and that's all I got to say at this point. Any other comments? Mr. Demming, you had a recommendation for a motion?
Yeah, I want to, I moved to table this, subject to call, pending the receipt of some answers. I also want to look more into some of this stuff, because like, I know there's a Classy Chassis Express on Terra Lane and Pass Road that doesn't have any manual labor, and so it concerns me. All the allegations thrown around, I would like to know the truth of what's going on, and whether this is really going to impact the community in a negative way. I want to talk to somebody, I want to talk to somebody else that can give me some, some understanding of the decibel ratings of the dryer systems and how it would impact neighborhoods. I know we have dryers, we have washers and dryers in systems like this, up and down Pops Ferry Road and Pass Road, near apartment complexes, and so I don't, I want to take all these things into consideration, and I would like the council to do the same. Therefore, I make a motion to table the subject of call pending the return of results regarding taxes, and in the meantime, I'll combine, I'll compile some information on the other issues.
Motion to table by Mr. Demming, is there a second? All right, second by Ms. Newman, discussion.
So we table this strictly about taxes? Because they hadn't meet, they hadn't met any conditional uses, and you knew that, and Jerry just stated that, have not met the conditional use to be considered conditional use, and then do a taxes. And then not meet, Jerry, you stated that yourself, they did not meet the conditional use, period.
Planning Commission believed it did not meet item C.
Okay, Mr. Wall, you raised your hand earlier, do you want to make a comment? No, you're good? All right, we're in discussion of the motion to table, anyone else would like to comment?
I just have one comment, I just, we mentioned this a lot, but we have a planning commission for a reason. And there are times that we overturn what they rule, but we put them there with guidelines, and it's for a reason. And, and like Jerry said, this project could be a great project, except for one of those nine conditions, and it doesn't fit. So, you know, I don't know that, that just, and I do have questions about the taxes, but I don't know that if they do have to pay taxes, that makes a difference, a difference if it doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. So I just think we need to be careful, and I know that we run into this a lot on short-term rentals, on trying to overturn what the planning commission, their rulings, but I think we need to be careful getting in a habit of overturning so many rulings that the planning commission puts before us.
Mr. Demming.
Thank you, Nathan, the planning commission said one out of nine, it didn't fit, right? And it's the character of the neighborhood. Now, with regard to that, it sits in between an apartment complex that has a barrier of the Alpha Care, and then, I mean, this is, this isn't like this is dropped down next door to people living, coming in and out of their doors. This is, this is on a commercial thoroughfare on Pass Road, and it's in between businesses. It's a, it's a little different than what I think it's made out to be, and while I agree with you to some regard, Nathan, that I don't think we should get in the habit of overturning things, the planning commission didn't say eight out of nine, it didn't fit. It said one out of nine, they didn't think it fit, and so I respectfully disagree with one of their nine assessments. I don't think we should, had it been more than just nine, and it's not about taxes, I discussed the sound of the dryers, I discussed the distance between residences, so it's not just about, it is about the meeting the conditions of the neighborhood or the characteristics of the neighborhood, I think that I do disagree with them on that. But if in this period of, of motion to table, I find out that those dryers are extremely louder than what I thought they were going to be, and they would disturb the quiet enjoyment of the neighborhoods, I'll vote against it. However, until I have any information that says that, using logic and seeing these car washes everywhere else in neighborhoods and next door to apartments and houses, I can't, I can't say that we shouldn't question one out of nine. It's such a small percentage to bet the house on, or for car wash.
Thank you, Mr. Demming, I'd just like to say, I don't think I can vote to table it. I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, I think, Nathan, you make a really valid point on the planning commission recommendations, even though we do have the ability to overturn their decisions, you know, when we have some of this information, we need to look at it, you know, very closely. If there being no one else that wants to make a comment, I'll call for the question to table it. All in favor to table? All opposed to tabling it? Motion fails to table, now we'll call for the question to deny, all in favor of the motion to deny? All opposed? Motion to deny carries. All right, do I have a motion on the consent?
Five-two.
Five-two. Do I have a motion on the consent?
I'll make that motion.
All right, moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Glavine, there are four items, and they're all related, X, Y, Z, and AA, and this deals with forgiving a reimbursement to the Economic Development Security Fund. You may recall that we started, I think, with 4.2 million in this fund for economic development, and the purpose was to help with economic development projects in the city, and it was restricted at first, and then probably a year, fifteen months later, we voted to, well, no, it doesn't have to be restricted, we can do some other things with it, as long as the council approves that. And now it's, and we've approved some projects, and now it's time to reimburse the, that fund, and of the total borrowed, 844,000. The total to be repaid would be, or that has been repaid, is 698,000. The total amount for these four projects to be forgiven is 144, excuse me, almost 146,000, or about seventeen percent of it. My thinking is, that's 145,000 we could use for economic development, different projects, different incentives. Downtown, Ward Two, Ward Three, along Pass Road, Cedar Lake, along, you've got a small business community out in Ward Seven there, and particularly, my thinking is, it would be great if we had some incentives for housing near the downtown area to get some walking traffic down there during the week. So that's my position on this, I think we should repay those, instead of forgiving it, we should transfer that money from the general fund to the Economic Development Security Fund.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let me respond to it, and the original intent was to keep that fund balance at 4.2 million and to be repaid, and we've done that successfully with regard to taxes and still repaying some of that. I think that the genesis of this was when we went after a million dollars to clean up Highway 90, and we were hopeful that we were going to get some reimbursement that would have been made up had MDOT provided that amount. We got 200,000 from the county, and 200,000 from coastal Mississippi. And this is the remainder of what we did spend with regard to that, of course, it was an economic development, you know, incentive to get this thing done. You know, I'm in favor of every kind of, you know, measure we can take, and we have, we're in a relatively good position to provide those things with regard to the bond money and some of the things we've done with use tax and some of those other opportunities. So I think it's just a matter of squaring up that remainder of what we did not recover from MDOT. I mean, it's, I don't think our accountant's here, but, you know, it's still in the same, it's just a matter of switching to do to, do from. Cash is still there, and cash is still committed to do things, but it was, you know, intended, I think is a big part of that cash and that fund balance in our AA rating, that it was never intended to be restricted by anything that wasn't self-imposed, and that's why, in my opinion, it was never restricted. It was to be used for those opportunities for economic development.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I spoke with Peter earlier about the same problem. Peter, could you just explain it, the way you broke it down to me, explain it to the council?
Right, you know, the Economic Security Fund was always a component of the general fund before, but this is primarily being driven by the auditors, rather than having these open loans out on the books. For example, the bicycle station, that didn't work out so good, that's like $10,000 we loaned to be repaid back. That's just been floating along that loan, and so this is to clear things up for the audit, but the resolution. the audit, but the, um, the resolution that we passed a year or so ago allowed for this forgiveness so we could clear the books up. I mean, the council's free to, to move this amount all into the general fund, but it is all sort of the same, it's under the general fund already.
Right. Well, the question, what are the audit looking at that they wanna clarify?
The, these are showing on the books as inter-fund loans, that we loaned money from the Economic Security Fund into a capital project, for example. Uh, the bricks at Howard Avenue, that was funded by, uh, some economic security development money. So, are those bricks gonna return money? I mean, they have in sales tax, and they have in new businesses already, but is there a direct income stream from those bricks? You know, not, not likely, but i- it's just a matter of where do you want the balance to be of your economic security fund? And during the budget, you could allocate whatever you want for economic security. I think we've still got about 110,000 less, left in potential, uh, downtown housing grants.
So actually, the money's still there, one way or the other?
Always been in one depository account, all of it.
But, but they did not like these open, uh, funds that someday, someday it could get paid back, and their recommendation was just to net them out and kinda just clean it up.
Yeah, I guess that's one-
Back to you, George.
Okay. I guess that's one way to close those accounts, but the other is to, another option is just to repay the loans, and that's, I understand it's all under the general fund.
It's all the do-tos, do-froms, you square those do-tos.
Right, no, I get that for audit purposes, I just, I just prefer to see it go back to where it came from, and that's where we differ. I mean, we have enough money in the general fund, and all we've heard this year is it's a, it's been a good year, and it has in some respects, and it hadn't in others, but, uh, I just think we ought to repay that money to that, repay those loans to that fund, you can close them on the books, and you've got that money there, still earmarked for economic development, or whatever in the mayor and, and the council agree to spend it on.
Well, we're not spending money, we're just clearing these do-tos, do-froms, similar to what this general fund prior year has, you know, spent up, uh, for, uh, the 30 fund, which is the, uh-
I know, I-
It's still-
I understand that, we're just talking about, we're just resolving a, an accounting issue here.
It's just balance sheet kind of items that need to be squared, and then it's, it's zero, nobody do-tos and do-froms anymore.
Right, but you could do that by repaying the money.
Well, you're not gonna repay it, you just, there's no repaying, you're not moving cash, you just swept-
You can move it on the books.
On the books, it's just an accounting issue.
Okay, so we have more than, so we have more than one option.
Well, I don't think so.
That's all, we just disagree. Birthday boy has a different option, we don't-
Okay, happy birthday!
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, go back to Mr. Lawrence, any other items? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, with, uh, the one I had, uh, question, Peter, about you was I-
No.
The, uh, the agreement with Biloxi, Biloxi Public School.
Right. That's a, uh, long-term lease we have with the Biloxi School District for the, uh, all the acreage at the A.J. Holloway Sports Complex. That's a 20-year lease that the council already approved as an interlocal with the school district. This just reflects that it's been approved by the Attorney General, it's been recorded in the land records, and we are spreading it on the minutes.
Yeah, what was the purpose you said of the reason, 'cause we're gonna redo some of the fields and that?
Right, uh, the old contract was a year-to-year agreement with the school district, and given the amount of money we're going to put into it, uh, to redo all the fields, we didn't want, we didn't want a year-to-year contract, we wanted a 20-year lease.
Okay, but that's something we still have yet to determine, what we're gonna spend on the fields, correct? That's if we're gonna do that later, this is just extending this to a 20-year contract, is all it's doing.
So we can do those things that, you know, we intend to do with the bond, recreation part of the bond.
And the other one was, uh, last one I had was C, is this lady already works for us, this is not added money for the, a lot of times, it's just somebody approved to do something, this is not a, this is somebody that's already there, it's not any added money.
This is front desk clerk to be certified.
Second.
Front desk clerk, as far as it's already there.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Barrett?
Um, I, I just have a question about W. Um, I, I've never seen one of these come before us. Is this someone that refused just compensation?
Uh, W is, um, no, they, they've, we've done these before, it's just been a while, there's been a, basically a year-long discussion about a curb cut, and, uh, suit was filed a while back, so it's just putting the fair market value into the court, so, so it's available for him to take.
So, they're refusing to sell it?
They're refusing to agree on, I think the price is basically agreed on, but they're negotiating on curb cuts, and we can't, I mean, at some point, you gotta-
What do you mean curb cuts?
Where, where the, where the roadway would be cut at the median-
Okay.
So they can turn.
Broadway, yeah.
Okay. So this isn't us taking someone's land?
Yes, it is. I mean, it's in, it's in litigation. No, it's in litigation, and, um, the court determined an appraisal, and, um-
So you're saying they're okay with selling the land, they're just not okay with where we're saying we're gonna put the curb?
Well, I'm not gonna represent that they're happy with the number, but I mean, it, it's in litigation, so the court, the court hired an appraiser to set the amount. By law, the city can pay in 85% of that amount, and then, uh, take possession of that strip of land that it needs.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Guines? Ms. Newman? Anything? Anything else, Paul? All right, uh, discussion is over, we'll get any exceptions, uh, from Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions?
None.
Mr. Guines? None. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? W, Mr. Demming's, uh, got a conflict with W. Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yeah, no on X, Y, Z, and AA.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett?
I'm, uh, um, no on W.
Mr. Barrett's a no on W, and I'm okay. What?
I was talking to myself.
Okay, all right, I thought you had something to add. All right, there being no other discussion or no one else talking to themselves, uh, need, uh, we'll vote on the question, all in favor. Those opposed, motion carries. Move on to the next item. Code enforcement, there's none. Routine agenda, do I have a motion?
Second.
All right, move, moved and seconded, discussion?
Oh, Bubba, anything come in? Additional money?
No, not yet.
Paul's not here, so-
There's no money coming in right now. We're ahead of the power curve.
We're, we're about 90 days up, and it was a 3.7 million, I think that, that hit, but, uh, there's nothing in the queue at this point in time. We're still, still-
I like what Mike, he summed it up pretty good, we hit it to the curb, I like that. That's good.
That's it.
Thank you.
Well, Walt, I told him he could miss tonight, and then he said to tell George hi.
All right, any other discussion on consent? There being none, all in favor? Those opposed, motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to recess in memory of Gerald Sunshine Creel.
Everybody seconds.
We all second. Everybody seconded, all in favor? Those opposed, enjoy the rest of cruising the coast, everyone. I took one.